Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are live.
Welcome to the City of Eureka Springs Boza and Planning Commission Meeting. Today is November 13th and it is 6:00 PM and we're in the basement of the auditorium at 36 South Main Street. And we have, first off, we have a public hearing for the sign variance application at 2017 East Van Buren, Jenny Street, owner? Are he is today? Are they here? Okay, come on up to the microphone, please. Mind if you could tell us a little bit about why the sign variance application?
So I purchased a small 12-unit property behind the Heritage Motel. And when it was operating as the Heritage, the signage was on 62, but it's tucked way back off of 62 and no one can find it. So I just needed a, I negotiated before I purchased the building that as long as the city was okay with it, that Shane and Lou, the current owners of the Heritage and former owners of my property, said they were fine if I just put a small sign that says, hey, my building's back here. So it's just an 18 by 18 sign. They have a concrete pillar right next to the trolley stop on their property. They said I could put one on both sides and that's all I want.
All right.
Fergie, I have one public comment.
Okay, and we have a public comment. So go ahead, go ahead.
Cassie, pursuant to our telephone conversation a moment ago, please be advised that I have absolutely no problem with the sign location for Studios at Eureka being adjacent to my office building located at 2023 East Van Buren. David Teagan, Teagan Insurance, LLC.
All right, anything else? No, that's the only one? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about the hearing for the sign variance? Okay? All right? Well, in that case, unless there's anything else you want to tell us? Okay, then I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. So the hearing is thereby closed.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the hearing's closed. All right, thank you. All right. Roll call, Tom. If you could have a roll call, please.
Ann Salee.
Here.
Mike Welch. Todd Price.
Here.
Fergie Stewitt.
Here.
Dave Budakali.
Here.
Susan Harmon.
Here.
I'm President Tom Buford and also President Cassie Dishman, our planning person.
All right, we have a quorum. Let's all stand for the public release. All right, thank you. First, the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. The agenda is written. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved, all right. Public comments. This public comment would refer to anything on the Board of Zoning's agenda tonight. So anybody has any comments on anything on the, for anything on the agenda for the Board of Zoning? Okay? Seeing nobody approached to meet one, we're gonna go to the first item of new business. There's no unfinished business, so new item. Tree removal, 36 Mill Hollow, David and Carla Clark, owner, removal of nine trees. Is David and Carla Clark here today? Okay, come on up.
Motion to discuss?
Second.
Yeah, I'm David Clark and this is Mike Darberst.
All right. All right, tell us all about the trees.
Yeah, so if you guys recall, I was here earlier in the year for zoning variance. We're gonna build a couple cabins on Mill Hollow Road over that seasonal creek. And there's, per the tree cut layout, drawing it, part of the package, there are several trees that are within the footprint of where the cabin's gonna be. And then behind the cabin is a pretty steep, rocky lot. And there's a number of trees up there. In fact, if you went by there, you would see some of them, a couple of them are laying down, I think within the last year or so. And there's several others up there where the roots are exposed and then there's, some of them even have root separation where the roots are completely up and there's a gap, you know, in soil because it's very shallow dirt up there. There's two different rock bluffs up there, so it's extremely rocky.
Anything else? Questions from the commission?
I make a motion that we approve the tree cut at 36 Mill Hollow.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and seconded for the tree removal application at 36 Mill Hollow, David and Clark, Carla Clark, owner, removal of nine living trees. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stand.
Okay, one who stands, she better pass. So we'll get your paperwork in a little bit.
All right, thank you.
Guess you might as well stay up.
You might as well stay there, Dave.
Yes, got the second one coming up.
Okay. Number two, tree removal, 38 Mill Hollow, David and Carla Clark, owner, removal of 10 trees. So just tell us about these trees.
Yeah, so this is pretty much a repeat of the 36 Mill Hollow, same thing where there's a number of trees that are within the footprint. And then there's several trees up on the hillside there that's with root separation. One thing I failed to mention on the previous address is we've done this, my wife and I have done this before, and usually if there's any good logs, we take those logs to the saw mill. A lot of these trees are smaller and have some damage, but there are a few of them in there that we'll be able to take to the saw mill and then that's what we use to trim the inside dwelling. So like the stair railing and door and window trim. So, yeah, the good logs will be put to use for interior finish work.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? And also, we have a statement from the arborist, if you have it in your packet.
I make a motion that we approve the tree cut at 38 Mill Hollow.
I have one comment. I hope you can reuse that Osage orange because that is beautiful wood.
Yeah, I was really surprised, actually originally from Kansas and that's what we would cut every year for firewood to, you know, heat the shop. And it's amazing, it seems like maybe about 20% of the trees on that.
In fact, our new benches in Basin Park is Osage orange.
Yeah, I've tried to make furniture and stuff out of it and
It's really hard wood.
Had much luck, yeah, just cracking is really hard. But, yeah, I'm gonna try to do, most of it's pretty small and it's in pretty rough shape, but I'm gonna see if there's any, something I can do with some of that.
I hope you can recycle it.
Some floating shelves or something like that, yeah.
All right, we got a motion from Ann on approval of 38 Mill Hollow.
I did the second already.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for tree removal, 38 Mill Hollow, David and Carla Clark, owner, removal of 10 trees. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stand.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tree removal, number three, tree removal, 45 Pivot Rock, Brian McKinley, McKimmy, applicant, removal of five living trees. Is Brian, okay?
Yeah, hello.
So tell us about these trees, sir.
So they're, basically these trees are just right in the footprint of where we want to build our house. Minus one, one of them is split and ready to crack, fall over, and one of them will be the access for the driveway to the garage.
Any questions to the applicant? No questions?
I make a motion to approve the tree cut at 45 Pivot Rock.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the tree removal at 45 Pivot Rock, Brian McKimmy, applicant, removal of five living trees. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stand.
Okay, one who stands, okay, it passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, number four, tree removal, 34 White, Cory and Leah Allison, owner, removal of 10 living trees. Are they here today? Okay?
My wife's name is Lila.
Oh, Lila, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get them right, it's just.
It's okay. It's a total of 10 trees all the way around the house. I mean, the farthest one from the house is about five foot, so from the base, they all lean over the house. Most of them are dead already, are infected, so they pretty much need to go, they're messing with the structure, so they're pulling up the concrete of the house itself too. So it'd be pretty good to get those suckers out of there.
Commissioners, anybody? No questions for the applicant?
Motion to approve the tree cut at 34 White.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the tree removal application for 34 White Street, Cory and Leah Allison.
Lila.
Lila, I'm sorry, I still can't get it right. Allison, owner, removal of 10 living trees. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stand.
One who stands.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, number five, sign variance. Sign variance for 2017 East Van Buren, Jenny Seenog, I guess that's right, owner, remove, request for one off-premise directional sign. Motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, and you're up there again, okay? Questions, commissioners?
Is that actually picture of your sign?
I think so, I can't see.
With the sign and the water underneath it?
Yes. It says Studios at Eureka on it.
I like it.
Thank you.
Just nice design.
Thanks.
It was just an 18 by 18 sign on both sides, right?
That's right.
Well, if you're bold enough to do that deal, you have my approval.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the sign variance at 2017 East Van Buren.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for sign variance. 2017 East Van Buren, Jenny Seenog, owner, request for one off-premise directional sign. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so the, all in favor, any opposed? We have a, the Board of Zoning is now closed and now we will open the Planning Commission meeting.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
I believe you all wanted to add something to the agenda.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, yeah, we talked about the planning, the 50K.
Oh, well, that's, we were talking about vision plan, that's on there. We don't have minutes, so we should remove those.
Okay.
And are we, are we removing the Act 60 since Mike is not here?
Do we know what that is? I mean, I didn't see it in the
I don't know.
Packet. And I've tried to figure out what it is.
We can table it.
Yeah.
That was, the mayor had forwarded that on to us and I thought, oh, I
Was it in there?
Yeah, I included it at the back, I believe.
And then Mike.
ACA Section 2078 to 29 is the same as Act 60.
And since Mike Welch is here, I guess we'll remove that. Number seven?
Yeah. Okay, so we're taking off number seven and we're taking out
Nine.
Number nine?
Uh huh.
Okay, so approval of the agenda as amended?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda, amended agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, public comments. Anybody that has public comments for any general item for the planning commission? You can come up and say you're, you got three minutes. Anyone? All right, I guess not, okay, not seeing anyone. So we have no unfinished business, with new business. We have the vision plan.
Motion to discuss?
I'm sorry, motion to discuss?
So you don't need to put my name on this next meeting.
Okay.
But I will, I will make a motion that we request $50,000 from the City Council to move forward with
To support our efforts with updating the vision.
To support our efforts with updating the vision plan. Thank you very much, David.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to, to ask the City Council for a budget of $50,000 for planning, what was it?
Update.
Planning update, vision plan update. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, number two, fence ordinance update. I can confirm that your ordinance of, that was approved, I think it was 30, do you know the number? I thought I had the number here.
I don't know the number.
Was that approved? Or was the metal building one was approved?
That's, that's why I have Fergie, because Fergie was there.
Okay, yeah.
Did they do the final on that one?
Yeah, it was last, on Monday.
Okay.
And they did approve both ordinances, but I've got the number here somewhere, wrote it down. They went through all three readings? They went through, they went through two readings last month and when we first, and then one reading of each this last meeting. Got it here somewhere, 38. Why can't find anything when I wanna find it?
Well, that's fantastic.
Yeah, so the, so, so the, so your, your fence ordinance is now approved as a city ordinance. Okay, so, so there's really no update?
The metal building needs one more, one more reading at City Council?
No, no, they're done.
Okay.
They've completely, they've done both readings, all three readings were done, and so they did the final reading last Monday, so it is, is now an ordinance.
All right.
Okay, all right.
Hopefully that helps Paul.
Yeah, yeah, Paul was there, yeah, I just can't remember them, 3875, anyway, anyway, the metal building ordinance, number three, update is also now an ordinance approved. That was an amendment to the current ordinance, so now the revised ordinance is now city, city ordinance. So congratulations, guys, good job on all, I know it took us about four meetings, we got them both done, so thank you for your work, guys, that was our, that was my first, I guess my first ordinance is your chair, so I think is great, I was there, so it was good stuff. The next item, weekly rentals.
Motion to discuss?
Second. Is Paul out there?
Yep, Paul's out there.
I hadn't gotten a chance to ask you about the status of the weekly rentals.
We've only done two so far and both of them passed, so.
You, you've deleted two?
No, we've done two of those weekly rentals, out of five, and both of them were passed, was approved.
Okay, so we just have three left?
We have three left.
Okay.
We did this, we did the second one this week.
Okay, perfect.
And I think I let Cassie know which one that was.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, great. Yeah, oh, by the way, the ordinance was 2378 for the fence and 2379 for the metal building. Sorry, I knew I'd find it.
2379 is full.
Oh, I'm sorry. The ordinance number was 2378 for the fence and 2379 for the metal building.
Okay, thank you.
All right, tree removal application.
Motion to discuss?
Second.
Okay.
So I put a little bit of work into this, I would have been trying to keep it to one page if possible, because I know people are more likely to fill it out if it's one page. I did not update the May Commissioners or Staff enter property to review site that we discussed last time, mostly because that's the wording on all of our other applications, so it felt strange, it, to me, it seems strange to have it different on one application, but if that's what we want to do, or if we want to revisit more, that wording on more applications, we can do that. I also separated out then, per Susan's request, the, a second signature to make sure they understand that they may be required to replace trees or pay a fee. That way, we can, you know, if they sign it, then we can at least say, well, we're not springing this on you here. Everyone is supposed to receive a copy of the code when they get this application, however, if people read it is another question. So just trying to make it as easy as possible. I did remove, on our current application, there are two sections at the bottom, one for living trees and one for dead trees. Since we don't technically, since Spotty technically doesn't approve dead trees, I just removed that entirely to keep it to the one page. Any comments or questions?
Yes, I have a comment on this. We discussed in previous meetings about tree replacement. I would like to see a line on here saying number of trees replaced, because it's not gonna be in anybody's mind that, yeah, we're removing trees, but there's nothing here that's saying we should replace the trees that are being removed.
Actually, we can, at the very bottom, it says comments and conditions. We can put conditions on that says, like, if you were gonna cut five trees, depending on what the property is, part of the condition that we approve this tree cut.
I would like to see something very explicitly stated that this number of trees are being replaced.
My worry, if that's what the commission wants, absolutely. My worry is that since replacing trees is not a requirement in code, it is only, we have a rubric, but it's only a requirement if the commission chooses to make it so, but then adding that to the application could be confusing for the applicant, thinking they have to replace trees no matter what, when that is not the case, it's only at the commission's discretion.
So we could stipulate on the approval that that replacement's required? And you'd, you'd have to put that in the
Yes.
Well, you know, I don't see what's wrong with that, because you have a number of dead trees, it could be zero. So you could have a number of trees replaced, they could put zero. What's the difference? You know?
Okay, go ahead, Susan.
The, the line that says comments and conditions, I just know from having to fill that out, a lot of times that line is left blank, even though maybe there is a condition and we just forget to do it. I would like to see, you know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not really sure that comments and conditions, the only, the only conditions that would be placed on this, maybe I'm not thinking this correctly, would either be the fee or the number of trees. So am I correct on that? I mean, what would be the other conditions? There aren't any other conditions, right? Unless we say you have to have it completed within two weeks, or you have to have it completed within a month, but, but that's not part of the ordinance.
I suppose you could give, for instance, a conditional approval, meaning that they need to meet another requirement before they're actually allowed to remove the trees.
So I was
Say in an instance where it's a new commercial construction, even if we have the plan, you could give the conditional approval that they can remove the trees after they receive their new commercial construction approval as well. You could do something like that.
So when you, I think I would like a checkbox, I agree with Scott, I would like a checkbox that says that they are responsible for paying that fee, and the num, and a little line that says tree replacement, 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 and put a number in there. The thing is, it doesn't have to be filled out, but at least it's, because the thing is that every time we fill one of these things out, you know, it might be five years from the time we approve something, and then something happens and we don't have a document that is clear as to what was required of that individual. I know that's come up before when we've approved some of our CUPs and things like that, where maybe they've done something a little bit differently, and then we try to go back and we try to find this information. And I'm not saying that that would happen with tree removal, but I'm just saying if it's very, very clear as to what is expected of that applicant and what was approved, then there's no, hey, I need to go watch the video and see exactly what we were, what we said. And I think with two lines, if it's just a quick fee or tree replacement, then, you know, we either fill it out or we don't. I just think that would, that would be clearer, even though they are responsible, they've signed that they understand what the ordinance says, but at the end of the meeting, when you're filling out the paperwork, dependent upon how tired you are or how much you want to really write in there, I think it'd be easier if you just were able to put fee, check, and tree replacement, the number, and just be done with it, and then it's there. But that's my opinion.
Any others? Anybody? I'd want it a little bit more affirmative, I think, and this is, this is after our approval, because I don't, I wouldn't want to see Cassie and Paul in the position of saying yes or no to tree replacement, right? So this is after we've approved it, is that right? After it's
Well, it would be, it would be condition of the
I understand, so I can see that, I can envision the line saying tree replacement required, no, yes. No circled, or yes, and there's a line with the number, maybe, I can see that, to just simplify it.
Yeah, that's what I
There you go, there you go.
Something small, but
Is it, anyone else? Okay, so, go ahead, Tom.
We still have the language, which I know you're trying to get on one page, where you say the May Commissioners, Staff enter property review the site, yes or no? I think it needs to be, yes, I mean, we need something saying by doing this, you allow the people, right now, it's us, it's the building inspector and the City Council, they all have, you know, the ability to look at the site now, under our existing ordinance and the modification of it, so.
I thought I read somewhere in our, in our planning book here recently that that phrase was in there, that we could go on property.
When Glenn Booth was here was there, for some reason, we've lost that application. Tonight, y'all approved the tree cuts on two different applications floating around.
Yeah, I
You know, we need to, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't think they ought to have the right to say, well, yeah, I don't want you to come on there, you know?
Okay, under, in our booklet, under the planning commission, it says, under I, it says the commission may enter upon land to make examinations and surveys and to maintain necessary monuments and markers therein. Now, I don't know if that means for everything, but that may
You know, years ago, it was affirmed, you know, affirmed your statement by signing the application you gave.
Oh, okay, so you just want them to make sure they understand it and it's there, right?
Yeah, I was threatened to go to jail one time because I went on
Okay.
Because I've driven, done drive-bys by properties that requested tree removal, and I've stood at the property line, because I was unsure whether I could walk on and look.
Well, you can't without somebody with the landowner approval, signing a statement that you can.
Exactly, we need that.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you know, they'll haul out their shotgun, you know, everybody has a shotgun here.
Well, the other thing is sometimes you can't see the trees that are designated from the road.
They're in the back of the house.
They could be behind the house, so I kind of agree with Tom. Just put in there that by completing this application, I understand that members of the planning commission have whatever access to come and inspect the designated trees that are
I have that on this sample application, I don't believe it's on any of the other applications you sent tonight, since we're still revising this application. I have not sent an approved final version to Paul or Jess to use. So that's why that language has not been updated in any of the applications we're receiving, but it is on my draft.
You know, and you know, as a courtesy, we're gonna identify ourselves as commissioners if we were to step on the property, you know, that's, you always ask permission also as a citizen.
Can you just quote that section out of the planning book? That says that we can go on property?
So every application we have, other than this one, all of them use that exact same language, may Commissioners, Staff enter property to review site, yes, no? And so I just don't see the need to change, if we're gonna change that language, I think we should do it on every application, not just this one. But this application didn't have it, that language at all, so I was adding it in.
Oh, I was just saying that since it's, it's, it appears like it's in our planning book and it's within code, that just like you referenced the chapter that the tree preservation is, you could reference that as well. I just can't imagine anybody saying no. You know, if they want our permission to cut a tree down and they have to mark their trees, I mean, we've never had anyone say no. I mean, I remember getting in trouble because we were told we couldn't do that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But, yeah, but since, yeah, I just can't see that anybody would say no, I can't imagine why. And Mike, that I can't understand why they would do that.
It only takes one.
Well, that's true, I guess we would ask them when they came in, why couldn't we come and inspect the trees that you want cut down?
They could have something illegal going on in the backyard, you know, who knows?
Am I also understanding that you're running out of room on your word document here?
here?
I mean, I can make it a more, a multi-page application as all of our others are. I'm just trying to make something that people will fill out accurately and completely.
I like the one pager idea, believe me.
I mean, you, I mean, it fits there, so.
Smaller type.
I mean, it's right in the middle, so, I mean, they have to read it to, you know, may commissioners, staff enter property to review site, yes, no. That's it. Is that okay, Tom? Do you like that part of it?
Go, I'm sorry, I wanted to go again.
It's right here. She's got it on her copy. May commissioners slash staff enter property to review site, yes or no?
Yeah, it's there.
And then once they sign it.
We shouldn't have a choice. They want to.
Yeah, I think we should take out the choice, you know, just be explicit.
It's automatic that they agreed.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
We might, just change to say that, that, you know, you're giving permission to the staff by executing this document, what some line.
Well, you could put it under, you could put it under, at the time of filing this application, the following exhibit and/or whatever must be provided to the board of zoning adjustment. And one of those provisions is that they're able to enter property. So it'd be number six instead of just having five there. Can you reword that? So it would say that instead?
And you get to take out one line, the may commissioners.
The old application had it in there, and it was on one page too, so I don't know what happened while we, you know.
Given that in the past, this commission has been told that they cannot enter private property, owner's property, without their permission, I know you just referenced that section of code, I would want to check with our attorney before we start making that a requirement. I just, I don't want to end up in legal water because we've made it a requirement and we don't have the authority to do so.
Oh, because they didn't have a choice?
Yeah.
Right.
I got you. Okay, well, I mean, I don't have a problem with finding out.
Yeah.
If that's, you know, no point in updating if we don't have all the correct information, so.
My thought as well.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so that's.
That's it.
You're going to come back to us the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, we can, you guys can either vote to approve these changes, and I'll keep working on future ones, but I can go ahead and get these changes to Paul and Jess, or we can just wait till we think we've got it in a good final form.
Well, at least, tonight, we had two different applications in here. So we at least ought to get one application while we're waiting on getting this. We got, we're using the old application plus the, the old application plus kind of the new application, but we're not using this application yet, so we need to, you know.
So should we just review a draft when it's done?
Yeah.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
So it's being put on the agenda next meeting because I don't want to drop the ball on this.
Yeah, we need to finish this up.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is not polite to keep them guessing on this whole thing.
Absolutely.
Do you want to finish it up tonight, or do you want to wait until our next meeting?
We could approve the changes we've discussed and let her go ahead and go forward with the changes.
So, okay, what is the remaining items of impasse here? What do we?
I think the remaining item is that can we go, the language.
And that requires a legal review. I got it.
Years ago.
If the attorney says yes, then we'll go ahead and, we can approve pending the attorney's approval.
Years ago, when Glenda Booth was here, I entered, entered some property, and I mentioned that to Glenda, and she said, you couldn't do that because you stepped off city street. So we got an opinion at that time that added language, saying that by signing the application, you're allowing the city building inspector and Bozak to enter that property as long as the application was pending. So that was done eight years ago. Now, I don't know whether we got the opinion, whether it was mutually gave the opinion or whether, where it came from. We got an opinion years ago about that. I mean, it's not real complicated. If you want somebody to do something, you know, you can require them to let you on the property, look at it.
Yeah.
I mean.
And once they put their signatures there, they've given permission, if that statement's there.
I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the changes, excluding the, the permission wait to hear from the city attorney, so that Jess and.
So it's pending?
Pending.
Pending that.
Pending that, so that they can go ahead and make the changes.
Want to comment, but we're keeping the statement in there, the yes and no. We're still keeping that.
Yeah, for now.
Yeah, I just want to get on record, yeah, okay.
And with a note from the commission that we're, we do want to get a legal opinion whether or not we can include language that affirmatively allows us without their option, yes or no.
And then we have a checkbox for the fee and a check or a whatever for the number of trees? Would we decide on that? Yes, no on a fee?
Well, the, the trees were under our approval section.
Right, so yes, no on the fee?
Yes.
Yes, no on the fee?
Right.
And then tree replacements.
Required, no would be the first one. And then if yes is circled, then there's a line next to it.
Okay, gotcha.
So.
If they circle no, then there's no line required.
You're still there with this, Ann?
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion, he has the motion. Do we have a second?
Second, yeah.
All right. So we have a motion, a second, to amend the current tree removal application as discussed tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Okay, good. That's it. All right. Thank you, Cassie. Next, adult-oriented businesses. Cassie?
So following up on last month's meeting, I reached back out to the city attorney regarding adding a section to our application or requiring such notification to be in the letter that's sent out for.
Public?
Cups, for conditional use permits. And her opinion was more or less that that really is not a good idea because if it falls under the definition of an adult-oriented business, it's not legal anyways. We're not going to approve that permit, probably would not, probably, I would probably tell them, don't even waste your money applying. If it is just more of an adult theme, since we can't regulate themes, it's not really then our, our part to put that on the application or force them to put that in a letter. I know that's, but that's her legal opinion, so.
So do we have anywhere in code that, that states those definitions of what that is?
Of what an adult-oriented business is? That is in state code, which is what we went over last.
Okay, so we're going by state code then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, unless you want to.
No, I, I just could not find anything in city code, and that's why I was asking what was in, you know, is there anything in state code? Is there anything else that we have? But if you're saying it's in state code.
Yeah.
And they've defined what that is?
Yes, and that was part of the packet for the October meeting.
Yeah.
It's pretty cut and dry. I read that. Not much we can do.
Thank you, Cassie.
Not to, not to regurgitate the whole thing, but based on the situation which led us to discuss this issue about adult-oriented business definitions, is there anything that we've discovered that would have changed the situation which caused your concern? Or was that more adult-themed?
It was based off of a call from a citizen. And the concern was that what is in code to prevent something coming into a, primarily it was residential neighborhood.
Okay.
You know, and then, then, then the next statement was, well, what if so-and-so, so-and-so sells their place and it's turned into this and we've, you know, there's kids around and whatever. So it, it was a, a bigger conversation. And I said, well, let me look and see if there's anything in code, and I couldn't find anything in code. So that's what brought it up. But if it is, if the city attorney feels like state code protects us or allows us to address those issues when they come up, then.
To the extent that what was happening is under the definition of adult-oriented business, but if it's adult-themed, not much we can do.
Right, so.
Is that it? Okay, is that good? Anybody? Anybody else on this side?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I read the state code, and it's very definitive as to what adult business is. Unfortunately, we can't regulate what happens behind a closed door. And I think, and that's where the whole thing of, a theme comes in. You know, that's like, you know, you throw a party, you have a theme for your party, you know? Once that door shuts, what they do behind that door is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even know if it was necessarily, you know, so much theme. It was just a what is in code. And, you know, when I started looking in code, I couldn't find anything in Eureka Springs code, but if the state code covers us, then, you know, then we should be, we should be fine.
Anything else? Anybody? Okay. All right. The next item I've got is merchandising outdoor displays. David?
Just had a question, really, to Cassie, maybe Paul, and members of the commission. Are there any current ordinances? There probably are. Just a quick discussion on what is allowed for outdoor merchandising, displays, and seating.
What would that be? Like, give me an example.
An example would be a business, which is a retail business, but has a lot of merchandise in a parking lot.
So like a pop-up, something?
Do what? Could be a pop-up, it could be a, a regular part of their business. So, or it could be a business which is a restaurant, and they're regularly using an outdoor seating area, but there's not a permit for that.
I, I will just say, I don't, sorry, David.
Go ahead.
I don't know, I'm not saying this is the only code there is. Despite some people's assumptions, I don't yet have the Eureka Springs municipal code memorized. I'm getting there. But I, the only one that I know off the top of my head, only because it was a question I was asked, is that vending machines are not allowed in R1. And to that extent, ATMs are not vending machines. So that's what I, that's what I know. I'm not saying that's it, because I definitely think there's more in there. I know there's a whole section on, you know, outdoor sales, vis-à-vis garage sales, et cetera. I just don't, since I don't give permits for garage sales, it's not a code I've looked at in depth.
All right, I'll do some research, and so in your, in your spare time.
I know it.
For weekend reading, we'll, we'll look at this here. So I'll, I'll do a little research myself. I don't want to blabber the point tonight until I'm prepared to speak intelligently on the subject, so let's just defer it.
I know at one point, when the city tried to do an entertainment district, that would have, would have allowed people to be out, say, a restaurant, have tables out on a sidewalk.
Right.
But obviously, we don't have that downtown. So, you know, there were, I mean, if we're talking about restaurants.
Yeah.
That would have allowed some.
It's more retail businesses.
Okay.
That, yeah, I don't want, I'll go through it in more detail, with some specifics, once we see, put it in the context of any ordinances or lack thereof. But it's a, you know, it's a, an aesthetic issue in the context of our cleanup and presentation of our entire city. Let's let it sit.
Well, thank you, David. And so the only thing we got left on our agenda is agenda setting. So we have a couple of items that we're going to bring back at our next meeting. One of them we talked about was the tree removal application. And, and then I think in January, we may, we may, we'll have another workshop in January for the vision, vision plan. Is there anything else? Yes.
I, I would like to put up whatever follow-up I get with Mayor Berry about.
Follow, okay, discussion, your discussion with Mayor Berry over.
Infrastructure.
The plan, the, oh, that information, what is it? Consultant?
Yes.
Are we putting Act 60 back on?
Oh, Act 60, yeah, that was Mike Welch. That was Act.
I can, if we'd like to.
Yeah, we can put it back on. Yeah, he's not here, so.
What is Act 60? Yeah, some clarification.
It was something that the mayor forwarded to us, essentially, I believe there was a House bill this year that got removed because it's, it was already more or less codified in state law, that we cannot, essentially, a daycare of a certain size is permitted by right in homes.
Right, yeah, okay.
Which doesn't exactly match with what our code says, but we would default to state code in that situation. I'm not sure what Mike wanted to state about it, other than he just asked that it be put on the agenda.
Maybe we just need to, maybe we just need to define it better within our, within our code, because it, it just says small and large.
Yeah.
We'll put it, we'll put it back on the agenda for next year. Anything else, guys? Anything else? All right. And I know we have Thanksgiving, so I hope you guys have a good Thanksgiving. So now we'll move to customer comments. Susan?
I don't have any.
I'm good, thank you.
Tom? No comment. Okay. Ann?
Nothing.
Anything?
Yeah, I would like to say, you know, our meeting was moved because of Veteran Days, and I'd like to acknowledge our veterans out there. I think it's important that they should be acknowledged for what they've contributed to our country and the sacrifices they make. And I just wanted to put that out there.